I want to begin by welcoming all of our honorees this evening. Their family and friends, those who are attending on a special day of retirement. We do have some county commissioners with us this evening too, which I'm always glad to see. Ms. Rhonda Allen is here, who is Chairman of Health and Education Committee. Mr. Pettis Reed is here with us this evening. And Mr. Doug Schaefer is here. And Mr. Shanto Serenio is with us this evening too. So, thank you for coming. With our board members today, we have our Chairman, Mr. Jeff Jordan is here. Vice Chair, Mr. Estes is with us today. And our former Chairman, Mr. Wayne Blair, is with us this evening. Thank you for coming. Now, I always don't want to fail to mention Ms. Michaels, who is behind this. Gets it all set up and gets everything arranged for this evening. Thank you, Ms. Michaels. Good job you did. I think this is my sixth year to do this, but I'm in your territory this year. Not only am I here to celebrate your career and congratulate you on retirement, this year I find myself joining you in retirement. And what I'm really beginning to imagine is, what is it to regain control of your own schedule? So, I know you as a teacher know that same thing. It is a bittersweet time, I think, as you retire and look back on a career. There are things that I will not miss in this. You know, the testing talk, you know, that's the big thing. That's certainly been a lot of that, 10 ready issues that are everywhere. And teachers, I sent you a message. I have received my opportunity to go in and say the problems with. So, I hope you, as teachers, if you were a proctor or you gave on the test, Controller's Office doing that, so go back and fill it in. Sometime this week, I think it will come. Maybe after tomorrow, which was supposed to be the last day online test. But please take time to do that, give feedback. You know, what I'm going to miss most of all is the people, the daily collaboration with so many talented individuals who just really deeply care for the children of Rutherford County, and the future of Rutherford County, and our whole society. And I'm sure it's the same for you, if you're retiring. That's what you're going to miss. I'm privileged to be here today and to have the opportunity to honor the many years of service that you've given to your schools and to Rutherford County and our children. There's nothing I enjoy more than recognizing hardworking people who continuously put the welfare of others above themselves, and you qualify for that certainly. It's important to realize that our school system is made up of all types of employees. The impact and effectiveness of our schools comes down to the quality of people who make up our school districts and the connections they have with the students every day. Whether you teach in front of the classroom, you work in the office, you clean floors, or prepare food in the cafeteria, every one of you affects performance because you contribute to that learning environment. Principals are interested in that learning environment because in the state model, it's one of the elements in the state's administrators evaluation. Environment's very important. The culture of the school is important. Today, we'll be honoring 43 employees being recognized for the years of service. And all these employees have dedicated a total of 1,055 years to Rutherford County Schools and improving the lives of children in our county. Those years represent a vast amount of wisdom and experience that deserves our commendation and gratitude. I know that for most of you, those years include unpaid hours and times you accumulated because of selfless dedication to your duties. Let's pause and then give them a hand for what they've done. All of you have earned some well-deserved time to yourselves. Many of you have said that you plan to work in your gardens, travel to new places, or spend more time with your families. Whatever retirement holds for you, I hope you find some enjoyable new ways to fill your days. We have a variety of employees who are retiring this year. One of the longest-serving employees has to be Charlene Phillips, sitting right over here, who retired in December after 45 years, served as a librarian and media specialist at Segal High School. We also are honoring some longtime administrators like John Deakins, who is retiring after a 40-year career and has served as Principal of Wilson Elementary School since it opened 17 years ago. There are many valuable employees who are retiring this year, and I'm going to share their highlights in just a moment. But I don't want to move on without saying how indebted our community is for your commitment over the years. It's never been harder to be an educator. It takes, the stakes are higher than ever. People are quick to point fingers and suggest something new mandate for schools. But there is a truth, more than ever before, our students are better prepared to complete and contribute to global community, to grasp tomorrow's opportunities. They hold that tremendous advantage to people like you, who have devoted their lives to our schools and our children. And I personally want to thank each and every one of you for that time and effort that you have placed in there. So, let's begin with our retirees. Mr. Jordan, are you passing out some of the plaques? Are you starting? Who starts first?
Me.
Okay. And if you will, come up and get your plaque. And as you watch from the audience, you're going to see some bios and some information on the two screens. It gives you a little chance to look at it. Our first one is Mr. Gilbert Aldridge. We'll do these in alphabetical order. Mr. Aldridge has been with the Rutherford County Schools for nine and a half years as a Core Director at Laverne High School. His greatest memory is seeing the joy on the faces of the students when they sing. I'll have to say for Mr. Aldridge, as he takes, you know the demographic makeup and the different nationalities in all of Laverne High School, but he sang for us many times and the students of Laverne at our central office and other places. Mr. Aldridge, you made a difference in a whole lot of lives, and I want to thank you for that. You're a great core player. Ms. Pamela J. Barnett. I certainly know this lady. Ms. Barnett has been at Rutherford County Schools for 31 years, and she's been at the central office for the past 19 years as a Secretary for the Director of Schools. She previously spent five years as a Cafeteria Manager at David Urie, five years as a Cafeteria Bookkeeper at Smyrna Primary, and two years as a substitute teacher. Your former teacher is standing right beside you, Ms. Barnett. Jeff Jordan, I think, was one of your former teachers. But what she's really looking forward to, I know, is that she will become a grandmother in June. And one of her reasons to retire is so she can be with that grandbaby. Congratulations, Ms. Barnett. Ms. Barney has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 20 years. She's taught kindergarten through 4th grade at Smyrna Primary, spent the past 14 years teaching either 1st or 2nd grade, as the principal chose. And I want to kind of read you one of the little points that you made in your bio. "Her greatest memory and excitement came when a student connected their learning with real life, understood the process. The light bulb goes off and the student's eyes twinkle when they know that they know it. She'll never forget all the happy dances in those classrooms." Congratulations to you, Ms. Barney. Teachers understand that. I do not hear any other profession people talk about when the light bulb goes on, but if you say it among a group of teachers, they know exactly what you're talking about if you taught in that classroom. Connie J. Barrett. Ms. Barrett has been with Rutherford County Schools for 30 years. She is currently with the central staff as a field trainer, manager for food service. She said her greatest memory is crossing paths with the many students, parents, and staff during this journey. And again, food service and the children that we serve, many of them that may be free reduced, or it may be the best meal, or in some cases, the only meal they get in a day. Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Janita Jones Walcom. Ms. Walcom has been with Rutherford County Schools for 20 years. During that time, she taught at Christiana and Barfield Elementary School, as well as Christiana and Whitworth-Baconon Middle Schools. She is looking forward to volunteering in her daughter's classroom. You can't give it up, so you go back and volunteer. You know, it makes me think of that old statement, "Once a teacher, always a teacher." And if you're teaching your children or your grandchildren, you're still in that teaching mode. And Ms. Laurie Cantrell. Ms. Cantrell has been in Rutherford County Schools for 22 years. She spent that entire time at David Urie, teaching 2nd and 3rd grades in the past 17 years as a library media specialist. I actually had the honor of employing Ms. Cantrell while I was at David Urie. She has many great memories, but two in particular include her great love and compassion for the other family at DYE with David Urie Elementary, and the thrill of watching a student learn, discover, or accomplish something new. Laurie said it's a thrill that never grows old. Thank you, Ms. Cantrell. Ms. Curtis has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 30 years. She's served 15 schools as a psychologist. We just call her Toni most of the time. "Her greatest memories of all the wonderful people she's come to know and love dearly." Antonia added, "Her life has been shaped forever by the students, their stories, their joys, and at times their struggles." Thank you very much, Ms. Toni. The next one is John Dinkins. Are you going to get him politics, or I don't know? Mr. Dinkins has been with Rutherford County Schools for 40 years. He spent the past 17 years, as said earlier, as a Principal of Wilson Elementary. Prior to that, he was a language arts teacher and a basketball coach at Walter Hill, as well as an Assistant Principal and then Principal at Roy Waldron. He plans to continue working with WGNS Radio when he's not playing lots of golf and spending time with his grandchildren. You know, who knows? One day, your voice on radio might be as familiar as James Evans. Do you think with his school messenger? Thank you, Mr. Dinkins. Ms. Joyce Edie. And Ms. Edie has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 39 years. During this time, she's worked as a special education teacher, more recently at the central office as a Title I Advocate for our Atleti students. Joyce plans to continue to bring joy and laughter, or worry and chaos, whichever the case may be, to all the lives she continues to touch during her retirement. Thank you much, Ms. Edie. Ms. Fisher has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 21 years, and you have been at Last Cassis Elementary for all 21 of those years. She's taught 2nd, 3rd grades at Last Cassis for those 21 years. You're a fixture there, Ms. Fisher. Thank you, and congratulations. Ms. Lisa Fox. Ms. Fox has been a kindergarten teacher with the Rutherford County Schools for 27 years. She's taught at Smyrna West, David Urie, Stewart's Creek, and Brown's Chapel Elementary Schools. She plans to spend more time with her family, especially her two grandsons. Congratulations, Ms. Fox. I guess as you read these bios, the most common theme besides just spending time with family, you're spending time with grandchildren. And you watch them as they are there today, what you kind of focus on when you're thinking about retirement, those grandchildren. Ms. Joanne Graves. And Ms. Graves has been with Rutherford County Schools for 10 years as the School Counselor at Barfield Elementary. "Her greatest memory is the gratifying feeling she got when an intervention she implemented made a significant difference in a parent's or student's life. And when a student looked at me and said, 'Guidance is my favorite class.'" I haven't heard that too much, Ms. Graves. Thank you. Congratulations on your retirement. There's a shortage of guidance counselors, so maybe that student might choose to follow your shoes someday. That's a good thing. And Ms. Laverne Green Grigsby. I've known you for a long time, right? With Smyrna Primary. Ms. Grigsby has been with Rutherford County Schools for 40 years. She spent 25 years as a classroom teacher at Smyrna Primary and 15 years at Stewart's Borough. "Her greatest memory is the interaction and the laughter with the children. If you look at her here now, you almost never see Laverne Grigsby without a smile on her face. So, that's why she can say that. When the children are in her class, there'll be a smile." Thank you, Ms. Grigsby. Ms. Harris has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 20 and one-half years. After spending one year as a 2nd grade interim teacher at Last Cassis Elementary, she's taught 4th grade, 3rd and 1st grade at Cedar Grove Elementary. Patsy loves to paint, but she certainly plans to endure her grandchildren and travel. I don't think I knew that you loved to paint. Congratulations, Ms. Harris. Ms. Hudgens has been with Rutherford County Schools for 33 years. She taught middle school at Walter Hill for 16 years before moving to Segal Middle, where she eventually took an interim position as an Assistant Principal. She then earned a full-time role as an Assistant Principal, splitting her time between Baconon Elementary and Blackman Middle for two years. She currently serves as the Assistant Principal at Blackman Middle School. She is saying something I kind of like to hear, Ms. Pat. You and your husband Carl currently have no immediate plans. But she definitely knows her alarm will not be going off at 4:15 a.m. Congratulations, Ms. Hudgens. Ms. Huntzinger has been with Rutherford County Schools for 30 years. She's been a classroom teacher at Thurman Francis and Cedar Grove, and an itinerant teacher at Stewart's Borough, Last Cassis, Rock Springs Middle, Roy Waldron, Baconon, Kittrelle, Whitworth-Baconon Middle, Thurman Francis, and Stewart's Creek Middle Schools. That's what itinerant means, right? You travel around teaching math. I love part of her bio here. "Her greatest memory is her first day of teaching, which she initially thought would be the last day of her career. Before classes had even started, one young boy decided to play keep-away with a purse of one of his classmates, knowing it was important to set clear routes for the day. Regina sternly told the boy to find the purse and do not come back to my room until you find it. Ms. Huntzinger was surprised when he did not return for 30 minutes, so she inquired, 'What took you so long?'" He replied, "'I don't know it would take so long to climb into the dumpster behind the school and dig out the purse.'" You taught a lesson that day, didn't you? That may be the most important. Congratulations, Ms. Huntzinger. Ms. Hunt has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 19 years as a 6th grade language arts teacher. The first three years were with Rock Springs Elementary. The past 16 have been at Rock Springs Middle. I also know she's spent a lot of time and effort working with the Rutherford Education Association, because I meet with them. Last year especially, I would see Ms. Hunt. She plans to travel with her husband to see family, visit daughter and son-in-law in India, and to visit all the cool places they've watched on Tennessee Crossroads over the years. Congratulations, Ms. Hunt. Ms. James has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 20 years. During that time, she's taught English 4 at Oakland and Segal High School. This is something you may not know, she was named the Cheer Coach of the Year and led her team to the TWSAA State Championships for cheerleading. Congratulations, Ms. James. Ms. Large has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 31 years, and has spent all of her time at McFadden. She was a 1st grade teacher for 12 years and has taught 2nd grade for 19 years. "Her greatest memory is being part of the steering team that created and wrote the maintenance school program at McFadden." Thank you for what you did, Ms. Large. Congratulations on your retirement. Ms. Laura Martin. Ms. Martin is in her 27th year with Rutherford County Schools. She's been teaching in the Science Department at Segal High since the school opened in 2003. Prior to that, she taught science and some math at Oakland High School. I can tell you, Ms. Martin, Mr. Creasy did not want to lose you as a science teacher. He's told me that. Has he tried to talk you out of it?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I'm open to bits.
Oh. "She plans to garden, sow, cook, read, lounge by the pool, play with the dog, and sleep late. She might help her husband grade some chemistry papers." So, what I pick up in this is, you intend for him to keep working, right? Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Renee Martin. Ms. Martin has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 40 years. She's been at Segal High for 15 years as a teacher and Assistant Principal after spending 25 years at Oakland High. Leo's life is not going to be the same, Ms. Martin. She said she will never forget watching with her class as a tornado took the roof right off part of the Oakland gym and not knowing what was happening. And I actually remember that event too, because one of my teachers at David Urie, Del Gay McElroy, had two daughters there. I knew about the tornado very quickly. She was very upset not being a mom at the site where her children might have been in a tornado. Ms. Renee Martin, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Ms. McDaniel has been with the Rutherford County Schools for eight years as the School Nutrition Manager at Whitworth-Baconon Middle. She plans to spend more time tending to her 91-year-old mother. That's good genetics. Ms. Oliver has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 40 years. After spending six years at Baconon Elementary, she's been at David Urie for the past 34 years, teaching 2nd and 3rd grade. You didn't put this in your bio, but I'm going to put that in, Ms. Oliver. "Her father is the late Thomas Tenpenny, who was the Principal of Central Middle School and brought in the mini-school concept and all into Rutherford County. He was also my principal for a while while I was teaching." Congratulations, Ms. Oliver. Jean Paul. May not be, I'll read his bio. "Mr. Paul has been with the Rutherford County Schools for eight years and is custodian at Stewart's Creek Elementary." Okay, Ms. Charlene Phillips. Ms. Phillips has been with the Rutherford County Schools for more than 45 years. In December, she retired as a librarian at Segal High, and had previously been a librarian at Oakland High, where she also taught English. "Her greatest memories were the opportunity to make lifelong friends and her amazing, hard-working coworkers, and having the chance to make a difference in the lives of our precious students." Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Kim Chavez Rowe. Ms. Rowe has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 26 years at John Coleman Elementary School, where she's taught 1st and 2nd grades and oversaw the K-5 computer lab. She spent her entire 26-year career in education at John Coleman Elementary School. My goodness, when you look at John Coleman now on the building now, it's such an amazing difference. I'm glad you got to experience that, aren't you? Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Ms. Richard has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 14 years as a custodian at Blackman High School, cleaning up after all those teenagers, right? She plans to enjoy her retirement with her family, and again, she says, with grandchildren. Again, that's a common theme through many of the ages. Congratulations, Ms. Richard. Ms. Wrightout has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 31 years as a special education teacher at McFadden and Barfield Elementary Schools. 31 years working as a special education teacher takes a special skill and a lot of patience. Thank you, Ms. Wrightout. We appreciate that work. Ms. Ross has been with Rutherford County Schools for five years as a custodian at Stewart's Creek and Oakland High Schools. She still plans to work part-time and travel with the senior center, but she liked to play bingo the best. Thank you, and congratulations, Ms. Ross. Mr. Shelton has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 31 years, and he has served for several years as a Principal of Blackman Middle School. Prior to Blackman, Mr. Shelton worked as an interim biology teacher at Smyrna High, before moving to a full-time role at Laverne High, where he eventually became an Assistant Principal. He later served as Principal of Central Middle before moving to Blackman Middle School. And reading his bio, I looked at some things. He's looking forward to riding a good horse. I know that. He was a farm boy. Hiking a good trail. I did not know catching a good wave. I did not know you had surfing in your future, Mr. Shelton. Thank you, and congratulations. Ms. Smith has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 14 years at Stewart's Borough Elementary School. She's taught 5th and 2nd grade for seven years each. She plans to travel, to relax, and spend more time with her husband. Congratulations, Ms. Smith. Congratulations, Ms. Smith. Mr. Mike Snell. Mr. Snell has been the transportation supervisor for Rutherford County Schools for the past 13 years, where he has worked with countless contractors, bus drivers, and principals to ensure students got to school and home each day. You know, I've said that there's two positions at the central office that personally I don't think I want to hold. One of them is the special education person, whoever's over there, the coordinator of special education. That's such a tough job, day in and day out. And the second one is transportation supervisor. I do not recall a time where somebody got on the phone and called, "Thank you for getting my child to school on time today." It's usually, "Where is that bus?" Or, "What's happening somewhere else?" Enjoy your hunting and playing golf, Mr. Snell. Thank you. Ms. South has been with Rutherford County Schools for 29 years, during which time she's taught at Thurman Francis, at David Urie, Kittrelle Elementary Schools as a special education interventionist. And one of the things that she says, and I know this is true because she taught for me at David Urie, she says, "I am grateful for having a career that I still enjoy after all these years." Thank you, Ms. South. The next one is Ms. Judith Thompson, and she is sick but never misses school much, so I do want to read a little bit of her bio. Ms. Thompson's been in Rutherford County Schools for 20 years as an English teacher, arts and writing instructor, and a math teacher. She says working with students has changed her, not the other way around. And she was Rock Springs Middle School. So thank you, Ms. Thompson. Ms. Todd has spent more than 22 years with Rutherford County Schools as a special education assistant. She's looking forward to working as a party planner. She loves to decorate, host parties for Christmas, Valentines, church clubs, and tea parties. Do you have your card today, Ms. Todd? Thank you. Ms. Trout has been with the Rutherford County Schools for six years. Since 2013, she's worked as a psychologist at Laverne Middle, John Coleman Elementary, McFadden, Central Magnet, Holloway High, and both Christiana Elementary and Middle Schools. She also says that she plans to travel, but enjoy her grandchildren too. Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Trout. Ms. Pondilio has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 18 years. She's taught English at Riverdale and at Smyrna High Schools. She's also served as a yearbook advisor. Now, that's a tough job. I've done a little bit of that once upon a time. She plans to move back to Wisconsin to spend time with family and travel. Ms. Pondilio, our testing coordinator, Josh Kubli, came from Wisconsin. He brought his family down here. "The weather is much better," he tells me. Congratulations, and thank you. Ms. Jewel Vils. Ms. Vils has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 30 years. She's spent 15 years as an educational assistant at Roy Waldron, and also 15 years as special education EA at Kittrelle. Something, I don't know whether you knew or not, your husband Henry helped break me in as a first-year teacher at Kittrelle School. Thank you, Mr. Henry, and thank you, Ms. Vils. Ms. Wood has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 41 years. She was a nutrition staff manager at Smyrna High, and most recently has been the school nutrition bookkeeper at the central office. Now, you didn't put this in your bullets, so I'm going to add this. Ms. Wood is one of the best cooks I know, because I've sampled what she's cooked. And such an accomplished food person, she always serves it with a smile. We're going to miss you, Ms. Wood. Ms. Woodruff has been with Rutherford County Schools for 16 years as a special education teacher, as well as CDC, and sped interventionists at Cedar Grove. Her greatest memory is going to be seeing a child understanding a concept they initially had difficulty grasping. If you look, we've had several special education teachers retiring today, and one of their common themes, again, is because their heart is so much into teaching students in special education, when someone gets it, the light comes on, it's really a special time for them. Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Ms. Zakario's been at Bacchanon Elementary School for all 31 years. She's been with Rutherford County Schools. She's taught first, second, third, and fourth grade. You've really seen a lot of changes at Bacchanon, that whole area and growth, being there 31 years. I like part of your bio down here. You want to travel, and Ireland is on your bucket list, right? Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Zakario. Barbara Zavishlock. Did I get close? Good. The people at Siegel affectionately call her Ms. Z. Ms. Zavishlock has been with Rutherford County Schools for 27 years, during which time she's worked at Walter Hill, Bacchanon Campus School, Last Cassis Elementary, Oakland High, and Siegel High. She's had so many great memories, but the greatest was a student who came back after his graduation to thank me for teaching him how to think outside the box. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Z. Ms. Zimmerman has been with the Rutherford County Schools for 20 years. She's spent five years at Thurman Francis and 15 at Blackman Middle School. One of the things that she's saying, once again, that she wants to do, she's going to do some subbing at St. Rose, but also wants to take care of her grandchildren. That's our last name today, but again, I'd really want to say, let's have one more round of applause for all these people who've given so much. When you read those names in a number of years, you can see how that comes to over 1,000 years of experience and skills that we're losing in Rutherford County Schools. Thank you for investing in the boys and girls of Rutherford County. Mr. Evans, he's picture-taking time also. Would you kind of tell me where you would like for them to assemble? If you're one of the recipients, please come up for this. Thank you again for coming. If there's more food, help yourself, and please have a safe trip home. Thank you.